Welcome to Oregon Voters Digest. The program that brings forward the social and political issues that are important to people living here in the Pacific Northwest. And now, your host, Bruce Broussard.
Welcome again to this show, the Oregon Voters Digest. I'm Bruce Broussard, your host. Well, folks, it is, there it is, right in front of you. The voters pamphlet. It's time, folks, right around the corner. I mean, Sunday next, at some point in time, Sunday next, we're gonna be talking about, guess what? We're gonna be talking about two days before the election day. You got me? And that's it. So really, Sunday is the last day. We'll probably be talking about predictions during that particular time, okay? Again, voters day.
I predict that you win. I'm gonna say that right now.
Gee, there we go, there we go again. We're right there, as you can see, people are stressed out. We've got a guest with us today, a young man that's running, because I'm talking about the county. Because, by the way, we've invited all sorts of guests, but in all due respect, they don't show up. We only take the people who are really positive and really wanna say something, okay? The bottom line is very simple. We're talking about the county today, there's another person who's running, who I think, a young, a millennial, if you will, from the community, District, District, not District Number Two, but the Chair of Multnomah County. He's running for the Chair of Multnomah County. His name is Chuck Crockett. And I thought maybe you need to meet this young man. I tell you what, I'm looking forward to working with him as time goes, but the bottom line, he stood up and he filed. He filed the run for office. And as far as I'm concerned, one of the reasons why we're doing this, I'm excited because, in all due respect, the issue of our young men within the community has always been the issue, identifying them as gang members and things of that nature. Well, the bottom line, folks, we need mentorship and we need role models aspect of it. And then, so that's exactly why we're doing what we're doing today. I got Fred here, my sidekick, he's co-host today, and we're gonna give this young man an opportunity to, to share his thoughts, his feelings of why he's running and this, that and the other. Then we'll take a break and then Fred and I'll get together and Fred will kinda drill me a bit about what the campaign is all about and what do I bring to the table? Okay? With that, why don't we just go on, Fred, and let's introduce this young man. Chuck, how you doing?
I'm good, how about you, Bruce?
Good, good, good. Well, tell us a little bit about yourself. We're gonna be asking some questions real quick.
Oh, yeah.
Speak up a little louder, speak up a little louder. There you go. There you go.
Let me go ahead. I normally do talk a little bit louder.
No, speak up.
Well, Chuck Crockett, as you said, running for County Chair, you know, from the Northeast Portland community, that's where I was born and raised, and so watching the gentrification and watching everything that's been going on with the mayor and the county and everything is what made me file. Like I said, a lot of people think I filed because Loretta Smith got called to be, and that's not why I filed. I filed way before that, months before that.
Okay, good, 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 good. All right. Well, tell us a little bit more about yourself. I mean, give me some feel, give me a feel for the background. You been in the community how long? How long you been there?
Well, I see, my mom's own house there for sixteen years.
Sixteen years?
Sixteen years.
Crockett?
Yeah, Crockett.
Like Davy.
What's that?
Like Davy Crockett.
Davy Crockett? Oh, wow, okay, all right. Go back a way.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out that connection.
Okay, 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 okay. So what do you think about the community? You running for the Chair, the Multnomah County aspect of it, that's a, that's a, that's quite a job, if you will. You got me on that? And the fact of the matter is, when you start thinking about where you live in District Number Two, you know, that's, that's a big area too. Basically, that's where you've been residing for many years. But that, in all due respect, when you think about it, that's really where most of the issues really, really lie, right? You got me? Well, let's talk about this, you know, because I said, I said that to you before, we got our young people in there, you know, in all due respect, young African-American males, and there's always an issue about police and this, that and the other, and, and there's that. What do you think about that? What can you do maybe to bring a solution to that issue?
Well, as far as the police issue, I mean, it's just how, you know, just the history of police, everybody knows the police, the re-police is slave bounty hunters. So I mean, that, I think that's a situation that needs to be addressed first off and foremost, and it's the policies that go with how the police treat each other. And the DA's backing them and the judge is backing them, and it's just the whole lineup of everything, the buddy-buddy system that they have. And it's, you know, the way people view us, you know, stereotyping us, the media, so on and so forth. So when the police get that opportunity to profile, racially profile, African-American or anyone, then they take advantage of that and they can go back and say, oh, that was probable cause. And so I think that once you break down that whole aspect of how they are defining us, then they'll be changed, the view is differently. I don't think they'll change how they conduct themselves, but I think that it'll have to change the way they are, you know, basically encountering us, how they start to encounter us, you know? I think that, you know, as far as us, you know, as people, you know, we need, like, you know, more businesses and everything and so on and so forth, but like I said, it's mostly the policies and, you know, the stereotyping that goes into how we're being treated by the police.
Okay. Now, as you know, as County Chair, if you elected County Chair, you really, you're really responsible for the jail, dealing.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the jails, that's where we are, right? You got me? And then the vetting of those folks and whatever. So the police actually works out of the city, city's office aspect of it, but you would be at the table because you're housing folks.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
So what would you say to them and to the mayor over there, because you're gonna be working side by side with this person? What do you feel that, that the city should be doing to resolve some of those issues that you were bringing up, that you brought up?
Oh, with the police?
Yeah.
I mean, first of all, if you think about, you know, there's, what, $200 million was the last budget and they're due to redo the budget again, you know, and they just, they just said that they don't even know why they're pulling over, oh, sorry, they don't even know why they're pulling over, you know, forty to sixty percent of the areas they're pulling over African-Americans, they're only six percent of the population, and they're talking about they don't know why, you know? He needs to address that, you know? You know why, it's because of being racist, you know? So he needs to address that.
You got a black man voice. Feel free to use it, man. Just let it flow.
You know, I'm South spoke, you know, I got a lot of knowledge, but I'm South spoken.
But see, I missed him when I was in Marine Corps, but he was, he was a little younger when I was recruiting, because I would've got him.
If he was four years younger, I would say, you gotta join the Marines. You gotta get that, you got some bass in your voice, let it out.
He's good, he's good, he's a solid dude. He's gonna warm up, that's why, that's why we got him on two pieces. We'll get him down here next week sometime.
Now, what would you do as County Chair to address that issue about how the police basically profile people and treat people in Portland?
Oh, you, you change the policies. You change the policies that they, that they use to get away with all that, and once you change the policies, it forces the way they conduct themselves, and once they have to conduct themselves differently, it'll become basically routine, because that's what they're on right now. They're on routine of acting this way, and when you change the routine of being able to act that way, then you'll change their behavior.
So that means you would work closely with the mayor?
Oh, yeah, I mean, work with, closer with the mayor and with the DA's, you know? Like I said, the DA is always, oh, the police get to review their footage before they write reports, you know, the police get to do this, hey, no, they don't get to do that, you know? They're, they're human beings, and when they're interacting with other human beings, you need to value the other citizen just as much you're valuing the police, the law enforcement. So that's where, me as far as Chair, that's where I'm gonna push the lines with the judges and the DA's where I can put my foot down, you know, as far as that aspect, because they're on the backside protecting everything they do, and they're influencing the policies more than anything, especially the lawmakers. So that's, that's probably.
You know that other part about that youth piece, because county does get involved with the youth, you know, that aspect of it, and Loretta Smith had basically, she had been, she had this youth program aspect of it, and that, we're talking about jobs here, we're talking about jobs here, and when you start thinking about the jobs aspect of it, how do you think you'd approach it, you know? Naturally, we've got, you need to eat.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
You gotta eat, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You gotta eat. So we got all these young folks, they, she, basically they had summer jobs, but also they're saying now that the county should get involved with the schools. We got the largest school district here in the state of Oregon, Portland Public Schools, and they don't have Voquet, you know, Voquet, basically getting the trash. So my point is that, would that be something that you might, as Chair, consider?
Oh, yeah, I think that the trades, they need to be back in the school, you know? I think that's one of the things that we're lacking is the, the training before college, you know? Everybody's been funneled into college to go accept debt, and they don't have any even basic skills to even go and feed themselves before they can even go to college, because they're just going in to just get, fall behind, and it's harder for them to survive, you know? If I'm going out into the world and all I have is McDonald's skills or, you know, customer service skills, you know, basic skill, yeah, you can't, you can say you can't.
Would you include in the vocational ed skills to make beer and skills to grow marijuana?
Yeah, I would. I would. I definitely, of course I would, you know what I mean? I was, like I said, you, you, you have to, you know what I mean? That's why I said that program with the summer job for the kids, you have to do that, and also think that, you know, business ownership should be something that they learn too, you know, how to be, you know, a business owner, that's something that really I think is lacking, you know, in the, in the community.
Good, good.
In the city, in the county, I mean, nobody wants to be, you know, they're just taking all work.
So you're talking about, this is coming from a twenty-nine-year-old man that's got employees already.
Right, right.
I mean, think about it, twenty-nine and he's already created jobs.
I mean, I'm so glad that he filed, he filed the run for office, you know, I mean, I met him when, when the B-word came out there, and I jumped out there front, and he was number two. But, but my point is, he, he was there, I mean, on there, the people wouldn't say nothing. You had folks sitting up in there, they wouldn't, they wouldn't say a word. You have a point, but at least he said something, you know? And that's the start to solving the problem, because they do have institutional racism at the county, they really have a problem.
They do, but I guarantee, I guarantee Loretta's called Deborah a bitch before. They call, you know how these people argue? That's why I can't wait for him to get up there. You know how these people argue? It's gonna be weird having the tall black man in the room arguing all these small white folks.
Well, I'm gonna be there too.
Dude, they call each, they're gonna be interesting. They all call each other names. I mean, they love each other, but you know, like brother and sister stuff, you know what I mean? Trust me, uh, trust me, Loretta has called Deborah a bitch before, she just didn't get caught with the hot dog.
Oh, I think that they, you know, especially the way she brushed it off, you can just tell that they do that all the time.
They do that all the time. And they're both A-type personality women, I mean, we're talking, I mean, they, they don't hold up the wall, you know what I'm talking about? They scrap, you know, Deborah's a good leader.
The other three don't say nothing. Like, I don't even think they're there.
Oh, you're talking about the three commissioners? Oh, yeah, they're, you know, I don't think they wanna get involved.
They're still OJT and on-the-job training. They're still in boot camp, they're still in boot camp. Let me go back to another point we referenced, to the holy shit police aspect of it. What do you think, you know Harry Jackson, remember, where Harry?
Yeah, the police, talking about the police sergeant.
And he was from the area, so to speak. Well, you think about Harry, Harry was really community policing. I mean, he was a guy that could get out of his car, he could drive by himself, he knew everybody out there on the streets aspect of it, he had no problem, there was always respect.
That's why I named the corner of Alberta the Boot Camp.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, what do you think about something like that? Is this something you might encourage the, the mayor to consider coming back with that same profile, find some more Harry Jacksons?
Oh, yeah, I think that the mayor should have a specific group of police that actually interact with the African-American community, that is just like literally not even part of what they have going on. And I've actually talked to him, I sent him emails to try to get this going, and, and he, they ignored me, you know? They called me about the housing, like, oh, we know you have a housing plan, guaranteed housing plan, that's what they hit me back about.
This is Willie you're talking about now?
I'm talking about Mayor Willie, yeah. I emailed all of the commissioners off, I even emailed Cofrey, Loretta Smith, all of the county commissioners, all, I've all tried.
They didn't respond to you?
None of them.
Wow, wow.
None of them.
But that's why, that's why I'm running, see? I would've responded. If not that, I would've, I would've already instituted the program.
Yeah, there you go, that's what I'm saying, because you could, I mean, there's definitely a way to go about policing the community better, and I think it starts with, you know, instead of just going against somebody and training them to think a certain way towards people, how about you go get a well-known gang member and put him in a police suit and tell him, go protect your community instead of taking away from your community?
No, I don't like that idea.
Well, in Marine Corps, that's what you did, in boot camp. You know, I recruited folks, but then they changed at the end of the deal.
No, I wanna get, I want a black person from the community.
Right, okay.
But they're gonna have to be out of gangs for a while before I trust them to do that. There's too much information.
Well, we can do a pre-deal. But my point, I guess the point that I'm making is that there's got to be some way of, where folks can respect the person that's now doing police work.
Oh, no, that's why I say, because think about it, think about it this way, you know, the youth are so concerned with Yang and, you know, looking at the weird hair and all this crazy stuff, you know, for them to be able to see somebody go from that lifestyle to immediately go in to have to protect and, and represent something different, I think that would be something amazing.
Well, that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing now.
That's the aspect I look at it, you know, you can have somebody respectable from the community overseeing them to make sure they stay on the right path, you know what I mean?
Well, see, in all due respect, in all due respect, that's why I reached out to you, because when I saw you, you know, what's the first thing I said? Man, you need to get a blue check.
Oh, yeah, you need a blue check.
And then I thought about it, I said, no, hell, he filed that way, he should be himself. I've got to set the example, you understand what I mean? I've got to set the example. That's my job. You got my point? And then as time goes, you do it on your own, because as if to say, well, if I can't, if I can't prove the fact that it's a better situation to deal with the issues you have, why change? You understand what I mean? Maybe I should change with you, and that could happen too. No, but it's, it's, that's a point that I wanted to make out to him, because I did. I went up to him and said, look, why don't you go down to GW, I get my stuff, you know what I'm saying, get a tie, whatever, right? And then, you know, I said that, right?
Yeah, you almost had me popping out the, you know, opening up the whole box of stuff and the dress stuff, yeah.
I did, I did, but, but then after a while, I thought about it, I said, well, no, wait a minute, he can't just transition to nothing, I got to prove the point, that's why I'm saying, as far as males like you and I, and you and I, Fred, we've got to set the example. I mean, you hear a lot of this stuff about mentorship and from African-American males, if you will, and, and, and also role models, right? Well, then be a role model, you know what I mean? And, and make sure that, because people don't, people resist any rapid change.
Oh, they definitely do.
Unless they're sincere too, see? That's why I'm saying about bringing, bringing the Harry Jackson thing back to the table. The idea is to find the Harrys who were there, because remember, Harry's motivation, as I saw it, was Bernard Plummer and I were the one that motivated him, because we lobbied to get him on this, on, on the police force, because he was too short and he didn't have a degree. We did that, Bernard Plummer and I, okay? And so he got on.
Now, Bernard Plummer's who?
Bernard Plummer, you know, Herman's, Herman's, Herman's niece.
Herman's niece.
Yeah, Herman's niece, and she's very active, she's, she's still living today, but she's very active or whatever, she was very active during that time, and so we were just kinda like working together and this, that and the other, and so there was Harry and, and some of the other folks that didn't. So as a result of that, Harry got on, he got to be one of the best cops there was, but it was all about community policing, and community policing is very, you know your working area.
Yeah.
You know, just like Don Dupuy always made the point about the fact, he knew what Northeast Portland was all about, because he knew the people.
Yeah, the first cop show came out the year he was born.
Yeah.
Very first show.
Yes.
Had Harry Jackson on it.
Yes.
He did, because he was such a good representative of the community, he knew how to conduct himself, yeah.
Well, he knew the community.
Yeah, he knew everything too.
Couldn't hide.
That's right, you got me?
Yep, he showed up in people's houses.
Exactly, see, he basically, you see somebody drunk down there, walking around, he said, get in the car, get them in the car and take them home.
Exactly.
That's the kind of, so that's the kind of attitude, but a lot of times what happens is that normally the people who are in charge today, they've never been there, they've never had their hands.
The first, the first thug.
First and then you ask questions, right?
The first thug that tried to break my mom's house, I was gonna go down and lay a serious butt-whipping at him and his brothers and stuff, I was mad.
I remember that.
As hell.
I remember that.
You know what I mean? Because my mom, that's my mom's house, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
And Harry is the one that made me stop.
Yeah.
You know, also took my gun.
Yeah.
But that's another story. But this boy tried to break my mom's house, so Harry tells me, Fred, let me take care of it. You know what I mean? I knew Harry could, because Harry knew, you know, where these guys lived.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And I was mad, I was still in the Marines then. I'm like, why should I let you do it? Because, you know, they're not gonna learn.
Right.
You know what I'm talking about?
Exactly.
And I hope his mom's there.
Exactly.
You know what I mean? Because I'm gonna give her a fright too.
Exactly.
And, but Harry says, I know where they live, let me talk to them. I was about twenty-three at the time, you know, guys like twenty-three?
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? And my mom was scared, and that hurt, you know, when your mom and your sister and stuff, you know, I still get mad about it. But what I'm trying to say is, Harry, being the cop that he was, said, Fred, I know how you feel, I know where they live too, you know what I'm talking about? Let me go down and I'll talk to them, you know, and I'll deal with them. He arrested the boy that tried to break in and everything, but, you know, he also got the message across.
He got the message, yeah, yeah.
You know, and I said, Harry, I am not going to Norway.
Yeah, yeah.
Worrying about my mom and dad, you know, telling me my mom, brother and sister.
Yeah.
It ain't happening, you know, it, it just ain't happening. And, but Harry did take care of it. He did, and he, he was right, he handled it right, I was in the wrong, you know what I'm talking about? But you know how it is when you care about your family, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But Harry cared about everybody.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and that's how, that's how Harry, you know, addressed it.
That's right, that's right.
You know, but you can ask them to this day, I did not expect the day to end the way it, it did. I mean, that was my mom.
Oh, man, hey.
You know, I think they just figured, you know, she's just an old black lady, anyway they want.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Well, you know, along that same line, that happened to me, right there on the corner shaving MLK, because when I opened up the military deal, the aspect of it, well, you didn't get to know everybody. I was in Marine Corps recruiter, but I knew everybody in the community. And, and it just so happened, somebody broke in the building one day, okay, busted out that glass door window aspect of it, and so I went right next door to the Burger Barn, what's my man's name, what's, what was his nickname? Oh, you know what I'm talking about?
I forgot, my grandfather won't let me meet him.
But anyway, I, I, I saw him, he basically, that was, he was running his little place, and I told him about the deal, and three days later, some dudes came over, cleaned up all the glasses, and had a contract to put the window back.
Oh, nice.
And it was done. You see what I'm saying? But it's respect, then from that point on, nobody messed around with nothing, and that's why I could walk all over the place, night, daylight, whatever, because I knew the people, I knew the terrain. And some of those guys I even put in the Marine Corps.
Now, when you were talking earlier, there's something you brought up earlier, I wanna see, I want you to explain it to Bruce's viewers again. You were talking about auditing, you know, bases of the county, make sure the services are going to the right people. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, good.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's from, I mean, you can look at it from programs that are trying to, you can give it to programs that are trying to give people money for businesses, I mean, after-school programs, I mean, if you can, just all through it, I mean, I mean, it's just, it's just like a royalty program, you know? When you look at the funds and the contracts and how everything's being spent, what they're doing and so on and so forth, I mean, there has to be an audit, because they're just basically just giving money away, just because nobody, like I said, nobody wants to say they failed. You know, nobody wants to own up to the fact that this may have failed, that we have to start from scratch, or we have to bring a new idea to the table and, and fund that, you know what I mean? Scrapping ideas, nobody wants to do that, because everybody has their baby, you know, just like Deborah Cofrey has a baby, just like Ted Wheeler has his baby, you know, housing is Ted Wheeler's baby, but he's not having, doing a good job, you know? Homelessness is Cofrey's baby, but she's closing homelessness shelters, you know what I mean? So, I mean, you have to audit, because where's all this money going? You know what I mean? You literally look at that, you're like, wait a minute, where's all this money going that you said, you said aside for that? If you're closing, if you're closing stuff, and you said you set aside this money, then where did the money go? That's where you're like, well, you have to.
So basically, you would make sure that the programs that the taxpayers' money is invested in.
Oh, definitely.
Are effective.
Right.
And are, are producing positive results. And if they're not effective, if they're not producing positive results, you're all for, you know, cutting them off.
Oh, definitely.
And investing in programs that do.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, that's just like, there's just like, you sell houses, right? So why would I continue to have this man, you know, sell houses that doesn't know what he's doing, if I have a person over here that knows what he's doing, but I've been working with him so long, I don't wanna let it go? You know, of course, I got a relationship with this person, I got a friendship with this person, but this isn't my money, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm, I'm an investor, I'm investing other people's money, you know what I mean? So I have to make the decision, you know, besides the friendship that I have to switch to you, because I'm using other people's money, so I can't continue to just throw other people's money down the drain because of my friendship. I gotta respect those other people and do what's right for them.
Wow. Twenty-nine years old.
Hey, that's a heavy, heavy.
Heavy, heavy.
Heavy, heavy piece. But you know, on that particular note, I might add a little bit from my standpoint, because I've seen that process going, again, like you, for quite some time, but my concept would be, okay, fine, once I find out there's a need, if you will, you put the contract out, somebody comes in and says, this is how I'm gonna perform the contract as per, but also included in that, in that deal of payday, I'm gonna pay you, I'm gonna pay you half the money, I'm not gonna pay you the full amount of money, in increments, based on how much you do for a certain period of time. So at the end of the day, uh, the, the accomplishment will be toward the contract. And the people would understand it. So you don't get paid until that piece is done.
Exactly.
There might be five different stages. But at the first stage, until, it might be a deadline, but if you haven't, if you haven't completed it, that, that particular deadline, we're gonna have to hold up. It just goes on to the next one. But you're still the number one. So at the end of the day, you may have only completed two out of five, and you're only gonna get paid for two.
Exactly.
You don't get paid for the whole five.
That makes sense.
You see what I'm saying? That's just common sense. You don't pay them before they get the job done.
Now, what's your position in Wapato?
Uh, my position in Wapato is, is same as Bruce, is homeless shelter and train them to be workers. You know what I mean? Like, of course, they, they all like to say, oh, it's way off in the city. Well, we're public transportation, or we can dedicate a bus, or buses, from the county, transportation from the county, to make sure people get back and forth to where they need to go to, at least within city limits, you know, the max. You know, the seventy-five that goes all the way out there to the north, or whatever, you know what I mean? So, uh, there should definitely be a homeless shelter, and it should be a training center too. You know what I mean? Cause that, I mean, them being able to train those people and get those people working, and get the, that tax dollars back into the system, you know what I mean? And they're, they're no longer using the system tax dollars, they're actually out of the system, you know? They, they completely removed themselves from needing, you know, government services, or any kind of help from the government, and they're putting back into it. Now you're creating a cycle of getting people out of this situation, instead of putting them into it.
That's good, I like that, I like that, I like that.
Guys, twenty-nine years old.
Twenty-nine, that's what I'm saying.
Damn.
I was impressed, I was impressed, I mean, and all due respect, I know, I know that if he doesn't get elected, and, and I'm, I'm fortunate to get elected, I'm gonna bring him on board. I'm gonna bring him on board, you know, and let him, let him be part of my staff, I mean.
And no matter how many votes, votes you get, like I said, if you win, follow through.
Oh, definitely.
If you don't win.
Follow through.
Follow through. You understand? Cause every time, every vote I've ever gotten, I've always looked at those votes as a mandate for me to keep going. You understand? Those people are investing in you. You know, you don't let them down, you understand? So no matter what, you keep going.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna keep going.
Oh, yeah.
Keep fighting, like I said, I mean, you know, before this, you know, the city of Portland hated me.
You're very lucky at your age to have the, the insight that you got, and the experiences, and how you've taken the experiences you've gone through. You understand what I'm talking about? And you're pushing them to a point where you're using that energy, that wisdom.
Right.
That you've gained for something positive. You understand what I'm talking about? You got a very old spirit, like the older black leaders, you understand? Who did the same thing, you know? So, keep going. You understand now, uh, what is your Facebook page? What, what is it called?
Uh, Chuck Crockett for Monoma County Chair.
Say it louder, man.
Chuck Crockett from Monoma County Chair.
Yeah, you got like a young Barry White voice. You gotta use it.
I wish I had the Barry White, the Barry White.
But Barry White sounded, Barry White sounded like you at twenty-nine. Now by the time you're my age.
I might be able to get the Barry White on.
Say it again to everybody.
Chuck Crockett from Monoma County Chair.
He's single, okay?
Chuck, Chuck Crockett.
Chuck Crockett from Monoma County Chair.
Now, what's your phone number?
Five oh three, five one nine, zero eight one five.
What's your email?
Uh, D A N A W I C K seventy-eight at gmail dot com.
All right, okay, good, good. Well, like I said, you can get that and vote for you. That's the name of the game, that's what it's all about.
Oh, definitely.
Now, I'm sure you're gonna probably have a little, little, little feel for the seniors, you know, and, and the senior citizen, you know? I mean, the senior citizen and the vets and this, that and the other.
Oh, definitely.
You know, I bring to the table, you know what I'm saying?
So, you know. That's where I got all this, you know, this knowledge from.
You got, you got, you got, he got a businessman right here in real estate, he's been in real estate, and he changed the community.
I was in real estate when I was his age.
That's right, that's right.
Matter of fact.
You know I knew that.
I was selling real estate when he was born. I'd been in real estate, I joined, I got in real estate when I was twenty-three.
In this up.
In September of nineteen eighty-eight.
Wow.
Nice.
Nineteen, that's the only good thing that happened in eighty-eight. I actually got married that year, too.
I was born in May eighty-eight.
I was, I got married in February of eighty-eight.
Oh, look at it.
Eighty-eight was, was kind of a good year.
Yeah, right.
Like getting in real estate. Second half of the year. Second half was better than the first half.
I remember when he got in, boy, it would've been huge if you and I had gotten together at the same time. Boy, we would've been building.
Now, I hit real estate hard.
I know, I know that.
Hard, that's all I thought about.
That's right.
Morning, noon, and night. Yeah, when, when he was born, that's all I could think about, was working at France Bakery and hitting real estate as hard as I could.
That's exactly how I feel, too, I wake up in the morning, I'm like, I gotta do this and that, and da, 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 da.
That's all I could think about.
It was a heavy, heavy, heavy piece. Well, anything else that you think that comes across your mind in terms of what, what are you gonna, you wanna share with the public out there in terms of what you plan to do as chair?
Uh, what I plan to do as chair, like I said, is to change everything and actually reconnect the people to their government, and reconnect the people to the county, that's really all I want, cause you know, like you said, people feel so disconnected, like people get elected in office, and they get the on-the-job training, and they're on, nobody knows what they're on anymore, you know what I mean? Just like, you know, people ask for resignations, you know, you get crowds of people asking for resignations of commissioners and mayors and, and, and the chair, and they just go, whatever, you know what I mean? I, I don't want people to feel that way, I want people to know that I'm connected to the people, and that's where I come from, is being a, a normal citizen, a person, you know what I mean? Living the life and, and experiencing the same thing that they're experiencing, that it's coming from their government.
Now, do you think there could be a different government in Portland? The government for white people and the government for black people based on how they treat us? You know what I'm talking about? Do you think, when you're talking about being connected? Cause trust me, county's connected to an awful lot of white people. They're happy with it.
I don't know, I know.
Especially white women, I know a lot of white women, beautiful, county's awesome. It works so well for me and my family, you know? It's like, they don't care it doesn't work for the black folks.
Oh, no, it's not just that, cause like I said, a lot of my voters are white, you know what I mean? They come from everywhere, you know, and so, you know, they know what I'm trying to do is literally just advance the county. Like I said, we can't advance as, as a country or anywhere unless we can do away with the old policies, the way we treat black people, the way we treat, you know?
Poor white people.
Yeah, poor white people, you know what I mean?
But they treat it like, they're treated like rich black people.
Yeah, I mean, so I mean, so I mean, you gotta, you gotta change that whole aspect of everything, you know? Like I said, you know, one thing I mentioned to the Oregonian when they interviewed me is, you know, there needs to be some kind of festivals.
Yeah, yeah, like the Bud Clark deal.
Yeah, there needs to be kind of festivals where we as county, we, we as county, as officials go out there, and we're doing stuff for the people, and they are actually connected to us. Cause there's not anything going on right now with any government official, with the public, they go out with the public, and actually enjoy the company of the people that elected them to be in office.
Yeah.
Wow.
And it pays for itself, too.
It does pay.
It does pay for itself, yeah.
Like I said, you got, you got, you got all of the.
It does pay.
You got the venues and all that kind of stuff that's there.
Getting people out to meet each other.
Didn't get the money, they'll pay for it.
Oh, exactly.
The council, it's closed, it's open, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, you know, bring it, bring it something, and you know, bring it new, you know? We've been living in this old exclusion law way of living since the day this, this country, you know, I'm not the country, but, I'll say the country, but the state.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it's been, and so I want, I wanna change that, I wanna completely veer that off, you know what I mean? And it's, 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 and once people see that, and they understand that, you know, and they understand the facts, and they'll know. And they'll see that, and they'll go, okay, this is definitely how things should be, you know, though, under, cause you know, people are so used to this way of government, that they are afraid of things changing in a better way, even though it, it's a better way, they're just like, oh, no.
You know, I agree with you, but let me ask you this, why aren't you afraid?
Because I know it's better. You know, and the people that know me, and the people I talk to and engage with, they know it's better. They're like, oh, I never even thought that, you know, government can be like that, and they're like, why aren't you the chair already? And I'm like, well, because there's somebody already there, you know what I mean? You gotta go through election process, you know? And they're like, I never even thought about that, as, as far as getting that, from the government official. And that's really what I like to hear, you know? Like, I never thought that that could be possible, but it is possible, it just comes from the person.
Right, but I tell you what, on that particular note, you know, as we said, what did they say there? Together we can do better.
Oh, definitely, I support that. Yeah, I like that, yeah, I like that.
I'll give, I'll share that brand with you, how's that? Together we can do better. Okay, Chuck, Chuck, it's been a pleasure.
Oh, thank you.
Now, Mother's Day is next week, so we wanna, you gotta come back down here.
Oh, definitely.
Next week, okay? And we're gonna talk about the county thing again.
Talk about your mom, too.
Yeah, you're gonna call her.
Oh, yeah, I'll, yeah, you know, I make my mom seven croquettes.
You do?
Yeah, I make them handmade.
You cook for your mom?
I cook for her all the time.
Awesome, awesome.
Oh, yeah, I'll tell you guys about, you know, a story, how I go to be such a good cooker and everything next week.
Next week.
Next week.
Oh, definitely, I said next week.
Okay, all right, okay, folks, there you go. There's my man, Chuck Crockett, he's running for chair of Monoma County. Interesting young man, he's got some good ideas, well, well, wisdom-wise, okay? Thanks again, Chuck, Fred's always a pleasure, and stick around, can you stick around for a minute? Okay, good.
You did very good, man.
Okay, did very, again, very good. Okay, Chuck, all right, we'll be right back, okay?
You are watching Oregon Voters Digest. This program can be seen again on these channels on these dates and times. Tell a friend.
Okay, welcome back again to Oregon Voters Digest, I'm Bruce Bussard, your host, and guess what, folks? We're nearing, we got about seven, eight, nine days, that's it, that's it. Mother's Day is next week, and then that's two days when you drop these babies in. I got mine squared away, I'm gonna, you know.
You're voting twice?
I'm, I'm voting twice.
You're voting twice?
I'm not, my, my wife's doing one, she did her own thing.
Okay.
And then I did my own thing, but you know, my point is that I'm not gonna send mine in till the last minute, you know that.
Now, do you think you earned your wife's vote?
No. That's what I'm saying, I'm preaching, that's what I'm praying right now, so say nice things to her, will you?
Well, it's all right, she's already voted, I can't convince her.
No, no, but I, I, sometimes if I change my mind, I'll just put it under the, under the old steam job. Fix it up and pull it out, say, oh, I don't like so-and-so, you know what I'm saying? Cause DeBora's on there now, see, I'm gonna figure out what's happening there. Okay, all right, good. Well, look here, what we're gonna do this time around, I'm gonna get Fred to interview me for a moment. You know, he's, he's a hard charger, aspect of it, and we got DeBora in the house, you know? We might give her, we might give her five minutes at the end of, at the end of the day routine, she's so tough, you know what I'm saying? Being the chair, you know, she's got to try to get a feel for how she's gonna relate to me when I'm sitting up there in the, in that position number two, aspect of it, you got me? Because I'm not, I'm, I may, I may look like I'm a.
Bruce, Bruce.
You know what I'm saying? Uh, uh, what's that?
No disrespect to DeBora, this is all you.
Is that what it is?
This is all you.
Well, I'm glad she's sitting there right there, so she can see.
This is all you.
You know what I mean?
She's gonna be on next week.
Oh, yeah, okay, good. All right, go on, go on. Tell me, what's up?
Bruce, you know how I feel about you, you know, you, um, you know, there's not many black leaders left like you. And, uh, you know, all of our friends, white and black out there, know that, because they look at the way the media and union leaders and stuff like that treat you. You know, they, these white guys, these white people, they don't know how to deal with a black person that's got a heart like yours, and a mind like yours, and experience like yours. So, what I wanna do is share with people, one of the many reasons why I... Well, well, I know, I, I, I'm not saying that some white people don't like Bruce. My, my whole point.
That's another Marine there, too.
Yeah, it's another Marine giving me a hard time.
That's another Marines.
No, 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 what we've got in this town.
And our crew, you know, gotta make sure.
We've got a lot of very racist people in our, in our media.
Well, well.
Hold it, hold it.
Well, that's the whole idea.
We got a lot of very racist people, our union heads, and we got, but the thing is, they don't share the information truly about who you are and what you bring. So that's what, that's what, that's what we're gonna share right here with people.
That's where I'm running.
And this is why white people and black people should, should vote for Bruce, okay? And ignore our union leaders, cause they're all racist white guys and women, and, uh, and ignore, uh, our union leaders and stuff, just ignore them. Now, Bruce, there's something that I, I, I tell people all the time that just shakes me about how you've affected Oregon. And that is when you helped create thirty-four years ago, uh, a district that gave a minority numerically an opportunity to win. It wasn't a fait accompli, but it gave it an opportunity for minority to win.
Right.
And, uh, it was, it was originally called District Eighteen, what is it called now?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. And it started out, we got Margaret Carter, who's a black woman, who.
It started out initially with a white guy.
Yeah, with a white guy, I'm sorry, with a white guy, Ed Lee, then it went to a black woman, but the thing is, today, in the year two thousand eighteen, a Native American woman, the first one in Oregon history.
That's right.
The only one down in the house.
That's right, that's right.
You, you understand?
That's right.
And, and, and guys, just because this district has been made in a way in which a, a minority could win, it's not a fait accompli, white people have won it about as often as black people have. But it shows that of all of the, of the, uh, districts in Oregon, it's the one that's got the most community spirit. And that's why we've had black people, and white people, and now a Native American.
And very qualified.
All right, now, what came, what, what made you do that?
Well, in, in all, in all due respect, I'll be right up front with you, I, I, when I came to this town, you know, and typically, well, where's the black community? They tell you, they tell you, he's my command, and it says, over there. Over there where? It's up there in northeast Portland. I looked, I looked at the map, and I said, gee, well, northeast is all over, this is a, this is a huge black community here, boy. I mean, looking at the boundaries, northeast Portland, and then all of a sudden, they said, no, it's just this little spot right here, that type of routine. So I said to them, I said, well, then I got, I sort of got into the know of, cause I was a recruiter, I was involved in all kinds of things. And then later on, I got into, in the business and whatever, and I said, wait a minute here. And then during that time with the federal government, all the federal monies, every state in the union had a northeast Portland. From that particular period, I said, well, gee, well, we need an address. I mean, cause they use, they, they use the so-called black community to talk about housing, and unemployment, and this, that, and the. At the end of the day, millions and millions of dollars are spent, but people are still unemployed, and no homeownership.
Cause they had no representative.
They had no representative, and, but the money was coming in here, and the money was spent elsewhere. So the name of the game is that I went about when I, when I owned the Portland Observer newspaper. The idea was to rally up the community, told them what the deal was, it wasn't just a Bruce deal, it was a community effort type routine. I just led the charge, cause I was involved in politics at that time, went down to the legislature, got in touch with the, with, with the T and all those guys, and then we basically came up, put, put an address on it. Put an address on it, it was District Eighteen. And I told them exactly what it was, and in fact, some of the politicians didn't like it, because they called it a black, a black, uh, uh, district, district. I said, no, it's not a black district, it's a district where a number, number of the residents happen to be black. They have to be just as qualified, if not better, you got me? But the chances would be better, and it happened.
It happened.
It happened, and it was for everybody.
And we've had black and white people represent that district, and now a Native American woman, the only one. Now, think about it, it, it was all the Native American history there is in Oregon.
Isn't that something?
And all the Native Americans we got living in Oregon.
Yep.
It was this district.
Yep.
That's got a Native American representative in it.
Yep, yep.
And that, that's what I'm trying to say, it all started from you thirty-four years ago. Now, let's go on to another thing I know you did. Everybody, the Portland Police Station in northeast MLK, when I came in, I was president of King Neighborhood, you remember that?
I remember that.
And Bruce came to me with this idea of putting together a community committee, where PDC, who was in, ultimately in charge of developing that project, uh, had to come to the community every week and discuss the progress, and thus learn how to develop the values of the community.
Exactly.
And the community said they wanted commercial.
That's right.
As well as the police.
That's right.
And they wanted to see minority businesses in there.
Exactly, exactly.
What was the outcome of that, Bruce?
Well, the outcome of it was that we, we got, we got that facility, but there was another piece of the package, you know? There was the, the senior citizen out, that aspect over there, and then there was the, the Blazer, Blazer, uh, through the, uh, through the Boys and Girls Club. And I just happened to know the chairman of the Boys and Girls Club was a friend of mine, Marine type, cause they were gonna put it up, they were gonna locate it in North, North Portland, up, up in, up in that area. And I convinced him, I said, look here, gee whiz, we can really get a diversity kind of a deal, we got District Eighteen over there, uh, parents would feel safe, if you will, cause the police department is right there, and the whole idea was, okay, fine. So that was that package all there, too. But in all due respect, what I really wanted to have seen there, like, you know, you were there, I still have that tape. I watched that tape, I got that video, right now and day.
Yeah, we should play it here one day.
We're gonna definitely play it. But the idea was that I, my thought was to have the police, have an open door to the police department, to come out in a foyer kind of a deal, so they could eat with the public, have several businesses within the deal, and then have a stage, you know, for anytime media came over, and then give senior citizens an opportunity to be sitting in there having a cup of coffee, you got me? They had no place, cause they, I remember when Fred Myers was there, many seniors would go there just to have a cup of coffee. They, they, when they tore it down, it, it was none, even when they gave it to the urban, they, they, they didn't do anything with it, aspect of it. And so I said, well, gee whiz, uh, well, anyway, remember, we talked about that, I had, I still have the plans today. I have the renderings right now and day at my, at my house. And, uh, and so that was the whole idea, was have a, keep it there, community. The other thing I wanted to do, the parking lot, you know, you had cover there. And before I went there, I used to work for US Bank. And US Bank, I was part of that team that put down the, the downtown market. US Bank did that when I was working for them, up in their, in their, in their marketing department aspect of it. And so I said, well, why not have a, a, a kind of a same deal, a charity market in northeast Portland, right, right, another deal there, use it, it's covered area aspect of it, people could bring tables in there, seniors and others could bring their wares and sell this, very, very safe kind of environment, no problem, whatever, but that naturally hasn't happened yet, I would suggest, but hopefully it will.
Now, Bruce, another thing that you've done that a lot of people don't know, because like I said, our media's not gonna talk about it, you know, um, you've actually built housing yourself. You've built that apartment building that's behind the police station in northeast Portland, right? And you built it in the early eighties, when interest rates were as high as twenty percent. How did that come about? I mean, you built an apartment building that over the last thirty-seven years has housed thousands of people affordably. You've actually built affordable housing, sustainable affordable housing.
Well, you know, in all due respect, Fred, I saw it coming about, I mean, when I, when I came here and I saw that real estate, right on the water, I said, it's just gonna be a matter of time, this is gonna be the most expensive, well, you, you were part of that, too. And that was gonna be the most expensive, and so the idea, the rush was, how do we keep those homes that are already there? This was old Portland, beautiful houses, you know, the structure and whatever, so the idea was, okay, fine, I was already in the housing business aspect of it, why not build a, a senior citizen condominiumized type of situation, bring the urban leg over there at the bottom aspect of it, and, uh, put, take the old folks out of their houses, put them in that arena, condominium, they could still own aspect of it, and put a young family in the house. And that to me made a lot of sense.
It does.
So what I did, I had to, I liquidated everything that I owned, cause you're right, that, I mean, it was hard to get there, and I ended up basically going to HUD and did a section eight type of deal, but it took a lot of money, and I got that thing done. I was gonna build a whole block, one hundred and seventy-two units, whole idea is to have some safety core right in the middle. But naturally, uh, I can remember the mayor at the time, it was Neil, just so happened, that when I got in on the private end of it, I couldn't get a bank to finance section eight, isn't that something? I couldn't get a bank to, I couldn't.
Well, a lot of banks don't like financing section eight now.
But I'm just saying, but I eat community, you hear all the whole cry about, let's build low-income housing, where are the minority contractors and the business? And I fitted all of those deals, nobody knocked on my door, so, uh, my wife knows how I am, I just say, I'm gonna do it. I said, let's liquidate this property, forget about it, we don't need no history, we don't, you don't know retirement, let's just do it.
And it's still, it's still there.
Still there.
Nobody running for, for office right now, the time we need some people to work on critical housing policy, you're the only one with a housing background. Now, let me ask you this, you also was another type of business owner, you own Norma's Kitchen.
Oh, yeah.
Which was located in Jansen Beach, so any of you who've been to Jansen Beach, you may have noticed Norma's Kitchen. How long ago did you start that up? And, you know, tell us about it.
Well, straight up was twelve years ago, that's my wife's deal. You know, she, she, you know, she loves to cook, you know, she's kind of a dietitian in her own right, aspect of it.
So that's another thing, too, the man supports his wife.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, big time.
He supports his woman.
Yeah, huge, huge, and I mean, I got a neat lady, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you do.
I eat well, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, she takes good care of you.
She takes good care of me.
She's a good person.
So she said she had a dream. She had a dream, she would love to have had a restaurant in her name, Norma's Kitchen. Not Bruce's, cause I'm out there doing my thing, she said, I wanted something, before we get to the point, we couldn't do it. I said, no problem, I, I came back two days later, I went and rented that little spot, cause I live on the island. It was vacant, it'd been vacant for two years, because no one could maintain it, couldn't do anything with it. I got it, and we opened up, I painted it, I went inside and cleaned it up myself, painted the whole deal, put some chairs and tables. She put that, we did the old Creole, cause it was Creole, we did good gumbo and catfish and things of that nature, opened up that spot. I did the selling, she did the cooking, it was a two-man shop, so to speak. And then I got Eugene Rashad to come over there and do the, do the music aspect of it, he did a hell of a job.
How many employees did you have?
Well, in all due respect, I had three. And I was always there.
So think about it, friends, he's created jobs, he's built housing, he developed policy to where we have a, uh, minority, in this case, a Native American.
Oh, yeah.
In the house.
Very proud of it.
Because she would not be there if it wasn't for this man. There's a lot of people she can thank for helping her get there and everything, and she earned it. She ran against, uh, what was it, Phillips, a black woman.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Two very smart women, great race, and she earned it.
She earned it. She earned it.
But that was, when I, when I watched that go down, I go, hey, how come the media isn't talking about Bruce?
That's right, that's right.
You got a black woman and a Native American woman going head-to-head.
That's right, that's right.
You understand?
That's right.
Two leaders, you know, in their own right.
That's right.
In this case, the Native American one, but she earned it.
She earned it.
She earned it, and she's done a good job.
Look at her resume, I mean, she's been there twenty years or so, she got very much involved in community and this, and the other, hey, she earned the right.
Yep.
Very simple.
But what I'm saying is, that opportunity would not have existed, Bruce, if it hadn't have been, you know, for you and your tenacity.
Well, you know, Fred, in all due respect, I've never bragged about anything, my wife knows, I just get up in the morning and try to figure out, what do I want to do?
Mm-hmm.
And I've been here over forty years, in this town, you know what I'm saying?
See, that's why I was saying on your show, Bruce, why, a lot of bad habits have got to go.
Mm-hmm.
You know, black people, friends, especially the older crowd, they don't like to talk about themselves, and they don't like to talk about what they've done, because they're worried that somebody white's gonna come in and ruin it or take it, and that's gotta end. That's why a lot of these people have let me down, I'm fifty-three, I grew up in Portland, I got friends all over the state, black and white, everything, I'm not racist at all, but I'm done with anybody white I feel is racist, and I'm done with anybody that loves them. Done, done, done.
Yeah.
And the fact that you may not have heard this stuff in this race, there's only one reason you haven't heard about it, friends, and that's because a lot of the people that we trust in media, trust in politics, they are David Duke racist lowlifes, and I'm telling you, it hurts, because this man has done so much that's made Portland better, and I, they won't admit it because they're afraid of offending white people. Not you white people, but the white people that run our media and run our unions, but the reason why there's so many black people today involved in politics, including me, goes back to this man and his selfless commitment to community. He's dragged us all along. You know, all the things that I've done, friends, in this town, the, all the houses, all the programs I've held, everything.
Yeah, a lot of it.
And once you understand it, a lot of it goes right back to Bruce setting the table for guys like me to be involved.
Mm-hmm.
And guess what? Not one white person that you trust in the Oregonian, Willamette Week, Portland Tribune, Portland Mercury, none of them think that's significant.
No, 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 they don't.
At all.
They look at it in a whole different way. In fact, I, I'm thinking about the last, um...
Should be legal to hit him over the head with a bat.
You know, what's interesting, the last, what you just said there, the last entree would reference to an interview with, uh, with us, in the last interview I was in, and in the Oregonian, I, I knew what they were going to do, I mean, it just got to the point, and I proved my point. I said, one, they were gonna, they were gonna pick this one lady who didn't have the background of any of the folks that, that were running with me, the other two people, and, uh, it was four of us, but they interviewed them, and, and so I didn't show up at that interview, so I called them, and then they called me up, and they're trying to interview me over the phone, so guess what? And one thing I do know, I know what to do with Wapato, so I spent my time on the phone talking to this young lady about Wapato and a solution. At the end of the day, two days later, it comes out in the Oregonian, it just says one thing, in the three, three, three centauria, this seventy-nine-year-old man who's a perennial, a perennial, who has run for everything in this town.
Mm-hmm.
That was it.
Yeah.
That was it. That was nothing, and I'm just, I'm just saying...
That is, that is classic David Duke.
But check this out, but see, the point...
That is classic David Duke right there.
The point I'm gonna make is that they've got the voters pamphlet.
Yeah.
They've got interviews, they got the Tribune, they've got this, and I, I can't go to the Scanning Observer, you know, I used to own the Observer, but they don't, they don't wanna relate to that, but my point is that they got all this material behind me, and yet still, they're gonna put that comment in the Oregonian, and I looked at the other, in all due respect, I looked at the other two blacks, and like, even this young man that we had here. It was a very negative kind of a deal, no respect.
Bruce, this is why David Duke says Portland media, they wish they could be bold like him.
Well, we need to change that.
He calls them a bunch of hypocrites.
Yeah, but we need to change that.
He says they, he says they want to be just like me, but they, they're afraid to.
Well, well, they, look here, I'm not afraid of anything.
I know.
You know, we, we were born and raised, if you will, in the Marine Corps, so to speak, you got me? And I, I have that, I'm, I'm an American, I feel very strong about that point, and so since I have that kind of an attitude, I want to share that, that's why I try to, I like Deborah, I mean, the fact she's running for chair and, and she's very articulate, she's got a good background, I mean, she could easily take over that chair with no problem.
Mm-hmm.
I got Sharon, for instance, Sharon, 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 she's good, she's just as great, she could do, she could do, do, with no problem, but my point is that, I'm saying, may have a little rough edge or whatever, but that's it, I said to them, both of them, while we're sitting up there on the, while we're interviewing, I said, look here, if I'm successful, I'm gonna hire all of them.
Well, Bruce?
I'm gonna even hire, she, she, look, she doesn't know anything about the deal.
Bruce, if you get on there, just make it legal in Multnomah County for one day a month to go down and pimp-slap an editor or a union head.
Well, they, well, well, then they'll be all there on me.
No, they won't.
Yeah, they want to interview you.
Because I'll be there.
But they want to interview you.
Yeah, no, I'll be there.
Then they'll interview with you.
They're not gonna come down there.
You do the interview, because you'll be on the staff.